Good evening. Today's date is Monday, November 7th. It is 6:30. This is the time set aside for the regular meeting of the Northern Lebanon School District. Would note that tonight is a special night to hold this meeting to accommodate the election that takes place tomorrow. Thank you, everyone, for accommodating this new schedule. I now call this meeting to order. Director England, would you lead us in a flag salute in a moment of silence, please?
Sure, I invite you to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd invite you to participate in a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you, Director England. At this time, Mrs. Martin, may I please have a roll call?
Yes. Bucks.
Here.
England.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Murray.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Arlo.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Nam.
Here.
All members present.
Great, thank you. First item on the agenda for this evening is the adoption of tonight's agenda. I assume everyone has had an opportunity to review the agenda that we established at last week's committee meeting. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to adopt the agenda as proposed.
Thank you, Director Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please indicate with a yes or an aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? My vote is also yes. That's unanimous. The motion carries. Presentations for tonight. Dr. Messinger, do we have any presentations?
Just the, you want to read off the high school students?
The High School Students of the Month for November are Grace Baumgartner and Siret Singh. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Club, and each recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Lions Club. Middle School Student of the Month for November is Owen Donner. This award is sponsored by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club, and this recipient will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. We do have Student Council Representative Alex Selby. I understand that he was ill today and is not here. I do not believe that we have a report from the student representative otherwise. Okay. Any other reports tonight? Just the superintendent's report?
Just that.
Great.
And I am going to, in light of, I'm anticipating a relatively long evening, I'm going to keep the report short. We're going to start with Ms. Martin's brief report on the budget.
Sure. So on the reports that you received, the budget summary report, there is only two noteworthy variances this month, and the first is in the revenue section. Just wanted to point out that our local real estate tax collections and our earned income tax collections are doing well, and that makes up the largest portion of that. The only area in local revenue that is not exceeding prior year's numbers is our real estate transfer tax. Last year was a booming market for real estate sales. The second is in the 300 line. Last year, we had received larger special education tuition invoices from the IU at this point in the school year, and then at the end of the year, we had an adjustment, got a refund. I believe we're trying to avoid doing the refund at the end of the year, so that's why the expenses are higher as we're going through. And the only other thing on that report that you now will receive in the board docs, which is what I had showed you last month, is the other column was higher in September, which if you looked at it, you would notice, and that is just because last month, we paid our quarterly employer share to Peasars, which is a large amount of like 1.6 million.
Okay. I am going to warn you that next month, we have reorganization, but we also have four or five different presentations. If I feel like we can't get them all, I'll move some. An athletic department recap, we have GPAs for your, for you to hear about, and participation numbers. We have some information from elementary in terms of some of the changes that they've done. So we have some presentations coming up. I postponed those till next month due to tonight going long. I did want to mention the volleyball team. Volleyball made it all the way to the district championship game and lost a tough one the other night, but they do participate in states tomorrow, and I had the privilege of seeing holes this weekend, Friday and Saturday. If anybody got to see that, they did a great job with that. We had some pretty cool, so good actors that, a lot of different kids I was really impressed with. So that's, those were some highlights this past week. But like I said, I wanted to intentionally keep it short so we can get on to some other stuff tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Messinger. Next item on the agenda is old business. Is there any old business to discuss this evening? Hearing none, we will move to the public comment portion of tonight's meeting. I understand that we have two items for public comment, two speakers. We'll just go in the order of notice of intent to speak tonight, and the first would be Martha Blau. And please state your name before you start, and you will have four minutes. I will give you the notice at about three and a half minutes that your time is coming to an end.
Okay. Can you, is this on? My name is Martha Blau, and I live at 112 Resource Drive in Jonestown. I don't personally know six of the eight candidates, but I had read some of their questions, so my opinion is based on what I'm reading. I might even pronounce some of their, mispronounce some of their names, but this is one of the things I thought when I read. I think a lot of them are misinformed about what the majority of parents want in the school districts. I see one comment, like from Troy Williams, that said the school board derives their authority from the state, or Richard Rabbit wants grants from the state and federal government. Did we not just have the biggest crisis because they were giving us money for us, and then we got stuck masking our kids? And I like to think that the school board has the right to control the school, and then we're not looking at the state for all the answers. I have here, it says that Joseph Murphy thinks there's an open exchange during the board meetings, and in my opinion, the school board doesn't give the parents a second to rebut at the end of the meeting. They can say it up front, and we can't answer questions later. There was one time, there was some legal something that came up, and it was on the agenda, and they never addressed it, and you know, we just go home. We can't even, you know, we say, hey, why don't we talk about that? Kreiser Shen thinks Northern Lebanon handled the pandemic well. As far as I've heard from CCA, 137 kids left the high school and the middle school to go to charter school after making kids wear masks for the second year in a row. So to me, that wasn't handling the pandemic very well. Chantel Lowser thinks the border, brick and mortar is the safest, best place for the kids as opposed to a charter. And in my opinion, when my son, when we pulled him out for CCA was because he was, he was an A and B student, but he was told if he didn't wear a mask, he could either do in-school suspension or leave. So he left, and we went to CCA. And he was also, that year, had to wrestle, the year before, he had to wrestle with a muzzle on his face while he was competing. And to me, that's not safe. So I think parents do need that option to go to charter school. That's what we feel is best for them. Actually, it's something good to say, Ben Moyer, but you said you're not running. But I liked how you touched on some of the real issues with bullying and violence, and that some of the parents' voices need to be heard. The problem of six of the eight candidates is that they weren't around fighting for the kids that I saw and trying to get the vote in. It feels like now that it's up to the board, they're saying, this is my degree, and this is all the nice things, you know, I'm going to say to the board, here's it, but I don't see, I didn't see them out fighting. Only Mrs. Day and Mrs. Bolts were literally in the trenches with the other parents. We were meeting in parks, gyms, coffee houses, starting groups, learning how to be right in on the ballot. And almost a year to this day, we were standing out in the cold, handing out write-in ballots, and Kim actually won the number of votes for that day. She just didn't win the mail-in ballots, ballots because she was a write-in. So if you want to look at somebody who the candidate, the parents were looking for, they looked at her, and that's who they had wanted. And I just feel like you can have fancy degrees or be a bunch, or just say what the board wants to, but actions speak louder than words. And I think we need to look at actions and what people have done. I mean, they could write something beautiful, but that doesn't mean that that's how they're going to act once they get on the board. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. The second item for public comment is Mr. Ben Moyer. If you could, please state your name and your address, and we will keep the time. I'll let you know when you have about 30 seconds left.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Ben Moyer. My address is 208 East Queen Street in Jonestown, PA. I just want to thank the board, the opportunity to give me the opportunity to be one of the nine candidates here, and I wish all eight, or seven, or how many were here, the best of luck. But before I withdraw my name, I just want to touch myself a little bit about myself. I'm a disabled retired state employee. I was in corrections activity specials for 13 years. I was a severe representative for 10 of those 13 years at my former state correctional institution. I currently volunteer my time serving on three boards. One is the St. Peter's Evangelical Lutheran Church up in Pine Grove, and I'm also the treasurer. The Northern Lebanon Youth Basketball Association, and the World Quest Resorts condo association as a director and serving them as their treasurer. And that condo is in Florida. I am a parent, I'm a parent of two lovely children. One is Shay. She is in eighth grade. She's my oldest. She's an excellent volleyball player. And my youngest is Isla Moyer. She likes basketball and field hockey. I just want to thank again, thank everybody again, and also, I am glad the superintendent has touched a good shout out to the volleyball girls. I do believe it is the first ever for those volleyball girls to win the school, not school league, I was in school league before because it was Pine Grove, but they're the league, and also the district runner-up. I think that might be a first ever in the school, so I'm hoping the board will eventually give them recognition in the upcoming meetings because they worked hard. I was at the game at Twin Valley. Unfortunately, it didn't come out, the outcome didn't come out as the way we wanted it, but they played hard. So at this time, I am withdrawing my name. I will try to run again in the upcoming elections, but at this time, I am too busy with other boards and other family, family get-togethers. So thank you again. Appreciate it, and best of luck, whoever's running. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer.
And Mr. Moyer, we will be having them. We're hoping they're not done for a while, but we will be having.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We will move on now to, I think, the critical point of tonight's meeting, and that is to fill the vacant board seat that we have. We did reach out to, we did publish the notice of the vacant board seat and received interest from nine prospective candidates. It was our option this year to issue some written questions and to invite some written responses. I will say that this district has gone through this process before, and we recognize that it is, it is perhaps not the most fun. It is a little arduous. The prior process did not give, in our estimation, the opportunity for prospective comments to really, to talk about their interests and their goals and experiences. And so we thought that this was a good opportunity to do that. So thank you to all the prospective candidates that filled out those Q and A. Those are very helpful. We did not discuss your responses, but we are using those as just one of the gauges for how we will select the replacement tonight. In addition to those written questions tonight, what we will do is we'll invite each of you to take a seat at the table, and we will ask about four questions of everybody. Everyone will have the opportunity to answer the same questions. So just so that that's clear. And then, once we've had an opportunity to interview, then the board directors will have an opportunity to nominate and second those candidates for a vote. I will just note that we appreciate, as a board, the interest that all of you have shown, the dedication that you've shown to the district, the desire and willingness that you have to be a part of this board and a part of this district to take leadership in it. It is highly valuable. We appreciate it. The fact that not everyone is nominated tonight is not an indication of the way that we value that. I do not know how the nominations are going to go, but I just wanted to say thank you and encourage you all for those that will not be appointed. Only one can be seated tonight. That the election is coming up in May will be the primary, and we do encourage everyone that's interested to enter your name into that primary. This vacant board seat will expire next December, so it is essentially a one-year seat. By law, this is typically a seat that is filled through an election, in a general election, but also by law, when a vacancy occurs, it falls upon the board to then identify a replacement for that seat. So we take this responsibility very seriously, and we do appreciate the effort that you've put into it thus far. Tonight, board directors are able to make more than one nomination. The nomination for a vote just indicates that the board member believes that your name or you should be up for the vote. Each board member is entitled to make more than one nomination if they choose to do so. They're also entitled to make more than one second. We will, after interviewing all of the candidates, we will then identify those that will be, that will be seated for the vote. Those that are not nominated will be excused at that point. You're free to go, and then we will have a vote. Any candidate that receives five votes tonight, that is a majority of the board, will be immediately seated and sworn in as the newest board member. If we do not receive five votes on any, on any single vote, then the candidate or candidates with the fewest number of votes will be excused. Those that are remaining will then be, will sit for a second or third vote if we need to do so. If we need to do so, we will reduce it down to two until there's a vote just between two candidates, but our hope is that it won't take that long. So all of those preliminaries stated, I will just invite now the candidates to take a seat at the table, and I'm just going to start in alphabetical order. Kimberly Bolts, if you could, if you wouldn't mind taking a seat at the left, your left. Ariana Day. Shen Kreiser. Chantel Lozer. Joseph Murphy. Is Kathy Price here? Don't believe so. So that will spread to six, and.
Want to slide a chair out and spread it out?
Please feel free to spread out.
Need to sit on top of each other.
And finally, Troy Williams. Yes, please spread out. And I will just note that two of us that are currently sitting on the board have been through this process before. We know that it can be painful, so we hope that this is as, invokes as little pain as possible. We're just going to start in alphabetical order for the first question. We'll just have you answer Ms. Bolts, and then we'll pass the microphone down. For the second question, we'll go in reverse order. We've got a total of four questions tonight. For the third and fourth questions, we'll start somewhere in the middle, and we'll go opposite direction, so everybody has a chance to be towards the front or towards the back. So thank you. The first question tonight, and we'll start again with Ms. Bolts. For everyone, we would like you to please introduce yourself, include any information that you think is relevant for the board to consider, and please tell us why you're interested in serving on the Northern Lebanon School District Board of Directors. Specifically, please answer this question. Serving as a school board director requires dedicated effort and time. What motivates you to seek a position as a school district director? I will give you a few seconds to think about that because I know that you're up right away. To answer this question, we will please limit the time to about five minutes. That includes both the introduction and the response to that question. The following questions that we'll have tonight will be lower in time duration. So I, I'm not going to keep it to a five-minute strict point, but I just do ask that as you're answering, be respectful of your colleagues as well, and whatever thought you are finishing, please bring that to a close as I note the time. Okay? Are you ready, Ms. Bolts?
Sure.
Great, thank you. Your time begins now.
This one?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Kimberly Bolts. I was going to start off just thanking you for the opportunity to be here, and also saying, I don't think, I wasn't expecting Martha to make a comment, but I don't think my name is new to most of you. I have lived in the Northern Lebanon district for 17 years. I was drawn to this area by the small community, as I have stated previously. I love the small community and the safety of it. I will retire next year with just under 24 years of service in the Army National Guard. So I will have nothing better to do with my time than to serve on the school board. I, I'm passionate about the school district. I'm passionate about my daughter being here and all that, all that it has to offer. I think it's a great school district. I know last year, I've spoke many times, and I may have come off a little harsh to some, and that's never my intent. Like I said, I'm passionate, and that's all it was. So I'm not really sure what else to say.
Fine, you don't have to take all five minutes. No, don't feel that you need to use all the time.
I just, I just want you to, again, I'm thankful for this opportunity. I don't think it's any surprise that I'm here tonight. I think I have a lot of, a lot to offer. And unfortunately, sometimes it takes a crisis for us to realize how much we don't know. And I think we saw that within the past year. I'm not proud of, you know, being in the dark for so long and not being more a part of the community, but like I said, next year, I'm going to retire, and I'm going to take that opportunity. I would like to take that opportunity to be more involved. I've led a life of community service, and I want to continue to do that in a different sector.
Great, thank you. Ms. Day.
Hi, I'm Ariane Day. I've been in this community for the last eight years. Northern Lebanon School District is the only district that I know of, actually in the United States because I immigrated eight years ago. It's the only district that my kids know and hopefully will know. Going through what we went through last year was definitely new for me. I never once thought I would have to get involved with my kids' education. It was something I guess I just always took for granted. I grew up in a great school district, never had to get involved with things, but something that really opened my eyes last year was my kids' needs not being met. And then I realized that it's not just my kids' needs, like every kid has a need, and it can't just be like a one shot. It's all for them. So I made the difficult decision three days into my kids' first experience with school to haul them out of the public school system and stick him into a, into CCA. I was one of those parents that pulled my child. And he absolutely thrived last year. While I saw a lot of his pupils suffer. And what has made me want to, I guess, see where I can go with, like what I, what I can contribute to this district is I know what CCA is offering kids. I know what private schools are offering the kids, and I now know what parents have to kind of hold the school district up against when they're looking at the best educational choice for their kid. I would love to really look at the cyber option for the public school system because there's a lot of kids out there that would thrive in that environment, and it also would allow them to do other things other than just being in school, such as the trades or an apprenticeship while still finishing school. I said I have two kids. They're just starting out in the school district. My husband is active-duty military. He's actually a medical instructor out at the Gap. So we're trying to be heavily involved in our community. I served on our HOA board for goodness, four years already. And yeah, I just want to see how I can serve my community because the people in this district are fabulous, and I think they deserve the best from us.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Shen Kreiser. I've lived in Northern Lebanon School District for just over 12 years. My husband graduated from Northern Lebanon, and his family basically came over here and settled in the late 1700s, and they've been here ever since. So we have five kids, soon to be six. So obviously, I'm very interested in the way that the public school system here will be serving them. I have a very strong passion for government in general, especially local government. I have a degree in state and local government from Millersville University. I grew up in York. So moving to Northern Lebanon in a very rural area has been quite eye-opening for me, but I really like the strong sense of community that they have here. Everybody knows everybody. When you go to the soccer game or you come to school, you know, I think that's wonderful, and I think that's something that's really, I really like about the school district here. And I think that that's something that the school district can, you know, enhance through being a part of the school, of the community. One of the reasons that I'm interested in this position is because I want to be more involved in the community here in public service. So in my professional job, I'm part of local government. I work for York County in emergency management. So I'm very in tune with everything that happened for the last few years as far as dealing with the pandemic and things, and some of the way the requirements were pushed down and how that wasn't necessarily fair to local government entities, including a school district. So I bring a lot of knowledge about the operations of local government, how that works, and the limitations that can be faced there. So yeah, basically, I just, I'm interested in this position just because I want to, I think we owe it to all of the kids in our district to do the best that we can for them. You know, the public school system should be the first option for everybody. It should be there to meet the needs of the community, and it should also be able to be held accountable to the community here.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Chantel Lozer. I've been a resident and also employed in this district for the past 20 years. What interests me about this position is I feel like everybody can make a difference, meaning we need to include our parents. I've noticed that with, I'm also the president of the football boosters, and including the parents in decision-making, making them feel included has definitely improved like their participation in the, in the football. So I feel like some of this starts at home as well. You know, there's a foundation in your own home that needs to carry over into school life. And so I think taking, you know, consideration of that when making decisions that affect the student population, I feel is what we need to look forward to. And, you know, student achievement, you know, celebrating their wins, encouraging them, I feel is super important. I feel like there's times where kids don't have that stable home life, and this is their stability. So making it the most positive experience for them, I feel is going to push our district along. And I'd love for our district to be recognized as top-notch. You know, I work for a top-notch company. I'm proud of that. And I would want children to feel that same way, as well as the parents in our community as well.
Great, thank you. Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. My name's Joe Murphy. I've lived in the district for seven years now. I teach at Lebanon Valley College in the athletic training program. I have two children in the district, one in the high school and one in the middle school, and I've loved the experience here. My two kids have had a great experience here at the school district. One of the things that I think about and I see every month when I get the mortgage payment is that money that goes in the escrow for the taxes, and that's the greatest investment that I can make into the community every year, is knowing that that money is going to help educate children and make a greater community. Because when we have great schools, we're going to have a better community. One of the reasons I want to be here is to obviously grow and make these schools better. One of the reasons I want to be here is to to obviously grow and make these schools better and improve our community. My, my expertise really lies in curriculum instruction and assessment. And I know assessment, Dr. Messenger isn't your favorite word. No, it's no one's favorite word. But I've had a lot of experience of that at the, at a program level and at a college level. I've written several accreditation reports at a program level and had a college and university level. So I'm pretty comfortable with that. And I'm hoping that I can help, help folks kind of understand that and not be afraid of assessment and what the, what that means and how that, how that data is actually going to improve the outcomes for students. So when they get out into the world, that they're, they, they know they had a great experience. We can show the data they had a great experience and they can go out and be ready for whatever they want to do, either that be college or career or military, whatever that, whatever their path takes them. As far as other things, because of the program I'm involved in at the college, I have a lot of community connections. I spend a lot of time out in the community, meeting with schools and companies in the area, working with our students who are in, who are in businesses and schools, the community. So I have that, I have those connections that I think will be helpful for the, for the board. But I do appreciate the opportunity just to speak tonight and give you kind of those, those overviews of what I'm thinking about.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Williams?
Good evening. My name is Troy Williams and my family and I have been living in the district for four years. But we are lifelong Lebanon County residents. And so I grew up in the Lebanon School District. My wife grew up in the Ambiel School District. And I have to say, as far as, as far as our experiences with public schools, our best experience has been with Northern Lebanon thus far. We are, we are parents of five children. Our oldest is 27, our youngest is 11. We sort of have two sets. We call them, you know, we have three old, three adult children now. We have two in the house. We have, we have an eighth grader and a sixth grader. We also have four grandchildren and another grandchild on the way. But with our older children, you know, we were, they were in the Lebanon School District. They were in the Cornwall Lebanon School District. And, and again, you know, like I said, I have to say that our experience thus far with public school, Northern Lebanon is the best. As far as my motive to wanting to serve on the board, it sort of comes down to two things. My parent, my wife and I have always been involved in our, in our children's education, whether it was as a, as a volunteer, being in the classroom or fundraisers or whatever, you know, we've always been involved in this, in our children's education. And, and when I, when our kids started coming here, I, I noticed, and of course, it was with the teacher shortage and things like that. And so I thought, well, how, you know, what, what can I do to help? And so I have a bachelor's degree from Liberty University in Christian Leadership and Management. And I have a master's of, of masters of divinity from Liberty University. And so I was able to go through the guest teacher program through the IU 13. And so I figured one way I could help the school district would be to come in and substitute. And so that's been a wonderful experience. And I've got the, got to meet some of the teachers and see some of the, and know them. Got to meet some of the students and have great interactions with them. So it's been just a wonderful experience. And, and, and I figured, you know, that's, that's a good way to help the school district and also to help my kids make sure that they're getting a good education. And, and, and so that's really the motive here of wanting to be part of the board is to, it might be selfish in a way, but I want to make sure my kids are getting what they deserve. But not just my kid, but every kid. So every child, every student that comes to the school, I want to make sure they're getting what they need. But secondly, as far as motivation goes, I suppose there's an innate something within, there's something inside me that just brings me to service. So if I were to review my life, I would say that it was a life of service. So I served our country, the United States Navy. When I graduated high school, went directly into the Navy. After I got out of the Navy, I worked at the VA Medical Center and served our fellow veterans for a number of years. And after that, I went to Lebanon County Christian Ministries and served the community in various capacities. And so it just seems like wherever I go, there's this, there's always an opportunity to serve. And so there was a, I think it was a Disney movie. And the, the, the one theme of the movie was if you see a need, fill a need. And that's sort of been my life experience is that when I see that there's, there's a need and if I can fill that need in any way, that's sort of what I end up doing. So that's sort of my main motivation for this at this time.
Great, thank you. Thank you all. For the second question, we will start with you, Mr. Williams. This will be three minutes. So you each have three minutes to provide an answer. As a school director, it is likely that you will encounter conflict and disagreements with other school board directors, administrators, or members of the public. Please explain how you would handle such conflicts, including board decisions, administrative decisions, solicitor recommendations with which you disagree. If you need to take a few seconds to think it over before you begin, that would be fine. And again, this will be a three minute response.
Well, it's no secret that if you live this life long enough, you're going to come into conflict. And so conflict doesn't have to be a negative thing. Conflict can always be a good thing, because most times through conflict is where you find the compromise and where you find the solutions. For me, the hardest thing is not to take things personally. If someone disagrees, disagrees with me or I disagree with them in any way, I'm, I'm all for wanting to sit down and talk it out. And, and unfortunately, what we're seeing in our world today, everything is just so polarized. There's no opportunities now to actually have discussions and sort of come to, come to solutions. So that being said, my, my focus will always be what's best for the organization? What is best for the school district in this case? And if I'm, if, if, if my view is, is not the right view and if, and if I'm able to have a conversation with someone with, with a differing view and they're able to convince me, great. But if I'm still not convinced, but if there's a majority, then there's the majority and I go along with the majority. Because ultimately, it comes down to what's best for the organization. And sometimes, you know, I don't have all the answers. I don't know everything. I'll be the first one to admit that. And so if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but it, but I might still have an opinion on things. But either way, my goal would be to come to some sort of compromise and always do what's best for the organization.
Great, thank you. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you. I, I think one of the, the best ways conflict resolution is, is listening. It's sitting down and, and listening and being critical of not only your position, but listening to their position and figuring out what's going to be best for the children here in the district? And how can we ensure that whatever decision is, is going to happen? That whatever the data shows, it's got to help them first. It can't push either of our agendas forward. It's got to be whatever is, is best for that, for the students here in the district. So I've had a lot of experiences in my previous life as an athletic trainer, dealing with football coaches and doctors and physicians and players who wanted to go back. And it was, it, the best conflict resolution I've ever found is, is hearing, not waiting, not, not sitting there looking to get your point in, but actually taking the time to hear someone else's opinion and having a conversation about it. Not letting your own personal views or whatever cloud your judgment, but hearing what has to be heard and then making a decision what's best for the kids.
Great, thank you. Lozer?
So I deal with conflict pretty much on a daily basis in the logistics industry. And what I've found is successful is factuals. If, if you're, if you're providing facts and can't dispute facts and being respectful and professional with how you present yourself as well, I feel is kind of top notch. You don't want to come across where you're not someone that you can work with. You want to be someone that you can resolve conflict with professionally and respectfully. So I feel like presenting the facts and then looking at it together as a group is a step forward.
Great, thank you. Ms. Kreiser?
When it comes to acute conflict and disagreement, I think it's important to listen to all sides of the issue, to consider where other people might be coming from. I think that's probably one of the biggest things that's missing in a lot of conversations today is to, you know, just try to meet people where they are, just to understand what their viewpoint is or why they might be suggesting something. And then look at the reasoning behind that. Try to validate that with facts or other information, or maybe how other people have done it. And then have a discussion and decide if that's going to work well for the director, for the school board, for the students, for the organization.
Great, thank you.
I think at this point, I just want to say ditto. Because, I mean, you're all right, we're all right. It comes down to listening and being respectful of one another. I also would keep in mind that the majority, if not all this board, are actually elected officials from this community. So there's a reason why you are all elected. So you bring something to the table. And you have to be respectful in that everyone has different experiences. But yes, bringing facts to the table. I'm, I'm a show me, don't tell me type of person. Showing me is, or sorry, telling me is your opinion. Showing me the facts is kind of where I am. I'm very analytical that way. That's how I normally make most of my decisions on a daily basis. I was thinking, as everyone was speaking, that, you know, mother's, mother's words ring true. You have two ears and one mouth for a reason. And I think that goes a long way here.
Great, thank you. For the third question, there are only two left. Oh, I'm, I apologize. I'm so sorry. My, my brain is moving ahead and, and I apologize.
That's okay.
That was a test.
That was, yeah, yeah.
Sorry about that.
No, no offense taken at all. I get it. I, I guess I would just say that I'm not a fan of confrontation. So I will do everything in my power to resolve an issue at the lowest level. I'm speaking in military terms. I believe in remaining open minded. Everybody's got an opinion and whether you agree with it or not, we're entitled to our opinions. We're all adults. And I think the best course of action is to act like it. It's just one thing I can't stand is when they're just fighting back and forth and you get nothing accomplished, just screaming at each other. So I would, I try to remain, one word we use is tactful. We can be tactful in our discussions and it, it's healthy, remaining open minded and, and to other people's opinions and, and facts definitely above all else. But there's a tactful way to do it and that's the course I will try to take every time.
Great, thank you. And you were very tactful with me. I appreciate it. Okay, now to what I was going to say. We have two more questions left. For question three, let's start with Ms. Kreiser and we'll move to Ms. Day after that. And then we'll, we'll, we'll follow up with the other three. For this question also, three minutes, and I just want to commend all of you. You have been very concise and succinct, which is something I'm unable to do. So I appreciate that. For this question, and we'll begin with you, Ms. Kreiser. Pennsylvania school boards are commonly referred to as teams of 10, referring to the nine elected or appointed school directors in this case and the superintendent. What does it mean for you to be a part of this Northern Lebanon team of 10?
Well, I think that obviously means collaboration. You know, we're here with a common goal, which is to become the best school district we can and serve our community and our students and our staff by making the best decisions we can, we can with the information presented. So we have to, of course, get information from the superintendent based on, you know, how the operations of the district are running. And then the board is here to determine policy and approve budgeting, curriculum, things like that. So, you know, those are, I think, the highlights of being a part of that. You know, the, the board isn't here to worry about which teachers are, you know, teaching second grade. That's operations, you know. There's, there's a definite line between what the school board is responsible for and what the superintendent is, but it definitely has to be a collaborative relationship. And I think there's, you know, a duty to make sure that each person is serving the other's needs and that everything's being addressed and taken care of. And that, you know, the board is also being transparent and accountable to their stakeholders, the community, parents, teachers, students, everyone.
Great, thank you. Ms. Day?
I think I understand the question, so I will try my best here. I see like an overall picture. I don't see it as necessarily one entity. Yes, we, you each have, like as a director, you each have your roles that you play, superintendent and things like that. But I see us as, at the end of the day, the group that everyone looks to, to keep things running and moving smoothly and progressing and staying up to date with, like, the times, the changing. Like, there's something I've been pondering over the last couple of weeks actually is the change that the education system is going to see years, like maybe even 10, 20 years down the road. Years ago, you'd never have heard of us, you know, the V3 or the SAR, the cyber option and things like that. So I see it's kind of like, we all have eyes and ears in the community and, and things that we can bring to the table to maybe try and implement to the betterment of our kids' education. And just making this district, a district that people want to come to, to live to and to stay in.
Thank you. Ms. Bolts?
So I mean, it would definitely be an honor. I see the school board as, as a team. And one thing that I really like about it is all the different backgrounds that, that can come together and, and referencing the military again. And I apologize, but it's been over half my life. That's one thing I love about that is all the backgrounds and the cultures and the, I'd like to say I, I lived under a rock until I joined the military and I didn't really realize how much was out there. And that's one thing I see with the school board is bringing in all these backgrounds and experiences and coming together. And like she said, collaborating and making this the best district that it can be. I think for as small as Northern Lebanon is, I'm just, I'm really impressed with, with how great it is at this, like the volleyball and, you know, the athletics and, you know, the past year and a half, two years, I mean, I wish we could just, you know, forget about it. I think many people would kind of threw a wrench. And you guys, you know, as well as the rest of the community and our kids, you know, you guys kind of took, took a beating for that too. But it was a little rabbit hole there. But like I said, I definitely like the, the, the team cohesion that it seems to bring.
Great, thank you. If I could ask you to transport the microphone all the way down to Mr. Williams?
Since you used the term team, I'll try to follow a sports analogy. What's already been said is that when you're part of a team, everyone has a different role. And when everyone sort of does their role and does it correctly, it just makes the team work and makes the team successful. And if the team's successful, then the entire organization is successful. Be part of this team would just be not so much of an honor, but more of a humbling experience. Although I would not, although there's no election taking place, but to have nine people or eight people, I'm sorry, eight people say, wow, this is a good individual. That would be a humbling for me if, 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 you know, there was a majority vote in that way. And so same way as far as, you know, elections, you know, to, to convince and persuade individuals to vote for you. To me, that's, that would be just a, a very difficult for, thing for me to do. I'm not very self promoting in that way, but it would certainly be just to be a humbling experience. But along those lines, you know, when you say about a team of 10, you know, this is sort of the team that's more public. But there's a team of thousands behind this team that really makes it work. And so the job of this team is to provide all the resources that the team behind it needs. And so this is And so this is sort of the team that gets all the glory and also gets all the heckling. When things don't go right. But there's such a greater team behind this one. That does a lot of work as well and is, and certainly would be humbling to be part of that team as well.
Great, thank you.
I, I think one of the big things is, is transparency when you're working in a team, especially a team the size of, of 10 people. And then being able to. Have a free flowing share of ideas. We talked about conflict earlier and how important that is to be able to. Be able to reduce the conflict and be able to hear each other's side so that. Everything is pushing forward to make sure that the, the children in the district are successful. That's, that's always, always the aim. But I, I believe that. The group together, as long as they're always focused on moving forward and pushing the children's agenda forward. And making sure that we're getting what they need for them to be world ready is most important.
Great, thank you.
I would use the word pride. Proud to work with a team. Proud of the work that the team does to support the students and the staff. And then watching that grow in a positive way within the community.
Great, thank you. We'll just leave the microphone with you. We'll start with you. For this last question, and this is a two, two minute question. Please list the two or three areas that you believe need the most focused attention. In order to best make public education effective both now and in the future. Two or three items.
I would start with your, the staff here. To retain your staff, you want tenure here. I'm a 19 year employee at my job, so the, the knowledge that I have, like with conflict resolution, with creative. Planning, those things are very important when you have a staff that has tenure. The care that they put into the students, the, the creative ways they found to engage students. I feel is very important here. And then extracurricular activities, what better way to keep our kids out of trouble? Keep them busy. So I feel like those are the two important things to focus on, like to propel the district forward.
Great, thank you. I will go to Mr. Murphy.
I, I do believe that, that teachers is probably the number one, one of the biggest issues we're seeing. At, at our institution, there's, there's a big drop, about 20% drop in 18 year olds that are college. And that are going to be college age in the next two years. So that's going to trickle down into the amount of. Folks that decide to go into teaching, so I think that's going to be a, a, a big issue for not only this district, but all, all the districts. Of how do you, how do you attract those teachers and how do you, how do you keep the ones that you have? The other is making sure these students are prepared and ready to go out to wherever. They're going to be and that they're, what, what we're seeing on our end is, are they able to handle the stress? And are they able to have the coping strategies they need to, to get out into the world? And be successful because we have some, we have some really high, high leverage programs where they need to be successful the day they enter. Institution. Make sure they're going to complete it, so we see students that come in, they're well, they're, they're great students, they're. They're, they're well prepared academically, but they're not socialized well or they're not able to handle stress very well. So that's one of the big things that we're seeing, more and more of that as we move forward.
Great, thank you. Mr. Williams?
Well, there's a couple of things that come to mind. One, while my students would not fit this category, I do know that there are some students that excel. Either be a virtual or online option. Now, Northern Lebanon offers that, but I would certainly like to see that, you know. Improved in some way. To still, to be able to continue, to be able to offer that as a, as an excelled option for those students who need it. I echo the, the comment made about extracurricular activities. I know as a student, it was one thing that kept me out of trouble, so whether it was sports or musicals or plays, whatever, or, or just clubs and those types of things. But giving, you know, the students every opportunity that they can to be engaged in some way in a positive manner. There was a third one that just, it slipped my mind. So I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. You do have one more minute.
All right, you don't need dead silence.
Okay, thank you. And if you could, again, transport it down to the end of the table to Ms. Bolts?
I would definitely echo the teachers. To me, that's number one. Quality teachers, I, I know my daughter. Has been in this district since kindergarten, she's now in eighth grade and I can't think of one that she hasn't. That she's had anything bad to say. And I'm pretty sure they're all still here, so that's great. Definitely the curriculum. Would be my number two. I have a 23 year old coworker who didn't know how to write a check and that just like, that was mind boggling to me. I learned that in fifth grade and I think we've gotten away from the basics. I know in my answers, this one thing I stated was back to basics, there's a lot of. Basic stuff on how to live and thrive that, that we don't teach anymore, cursive. I'm not even sure if we're teaching that anymore. It's, it's, it's really important, I mean, I know we're in a digital, a digital age now, but that kind of stuff is still important to me. And then definitely extracurricular activities for the same reasons.
Great, thank you.
So I'd have to say first, I think Northern Lebanon does a really great job with the extracurricular activities that. We have in place for the kids. I think. Retaining the quality educators is number one, because I think that also plays into. Like the school atmosphere and how, like what our, our kids' experience is going to be going through school. I mean, these educators are with our kids eight hours a day, more than their parents are. I mean, it's, it's a bit, it's a relationship that develops over time and. I'd say the second thing, like I mentioned before, is really trying to get Northern Lebanon. Up. With these cyber and charter schools, I mean, that's who we're competing with. Millions of dollars left this district last year because. Parents knew the V, the V3 lacked in many ways. So I would really like to see some investing into that to see if we can't bring some kids back and. Keep the kids in public school, I mean, every, every child is entitled to a public education, why can't? That option be available to them too, in this day and age?
Great, thank you.
So I would have to say engage staff and educators, teachers, administrators. You know, they're going to set the tone for the school and they're going to make. The students, you know, it's great when they can walk down the hall and say, hey, to the principal and they have that relationship built, you know, that makes them feel as part of the, the school community. Which is going to go to help student engagement, so it's important to not only attract quality educators, but also. Quality staff and make sure that they are engaged, they're not just coming here for a paycheck, they're coming here because they want to be here, because they want to be teaching the students. And then I think that translates then to student engagement, which I think the district does pretty well by offering a variety of opportunities for students. You know, it's going to be something different for every student that's going to motivate them to want to be at school, be a part of school. To learn those skills. I mean, there's a lot of skills that you learn by participating in extracurricular activities. And in clubs, you know, leadership things. There's going to be kids for the best, the best fit for them is going to be, you know, participating in the school play or. Is it, you know, going to service club or is it being on the basketball team? So I think offering a variety of opportunities, both educationally and. And when it comes to extracurricular activities are really important to get that student engagement. I know, understand that might be difficult because it's a rural school district, we don't have infinite resources, but. From what I've seen so far, I would have very limited experience with the secondary level so far, but, you know, I've, I've been impressed, yeah, so far with what I've seen there. So and then I think maybe a third thing would be the role of technology. You know, in. In classrooms, in schools. You know, are we? Why are we using this technology? Is it benefiting the students? It's one thing to use technology because we live in a digital age, but is it something that's really necessary for kindergarteners to be learning? You know, how to do things on their iPad? I say that coming from my husband works for a large tech company and so we don't allow our kids to have tablets and things, so I think there's a. You know, it's, it's something that we should consider as a district.
Great, thank you. Appreciate all of your responses and it, and only, the last question was the only one that, that hit your time limit, so well done, all of you, I really do appreciate it. I think at this point, I will open it up to questions on process, just regarding the procedure going forward, either from. Any of the six of you or any board members, are there any questions regarding how we proceed going forward?
I, I just wanted to comment, I think you referenced it, Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams was working for us as a substitute up until Friday. In order to be eligible for the board, he needed to not be working for us. So he did resign as of Friday. I will put you on tonight after the meeting with the retroactive approval of the board. If you're not the successful candidate, we would love to have you back as a substitute teacher. But I just want to make it clear that, that he is not currently working for us and is eligible to run there for, because of that.
Thank you. I just want to commend each of you again. I know that this was a difficult process to enter into. You all put in a lot of work in answering the questions and your presence tonight was, was much appreciated. Now, we're moving now into the nomination phase, I have the luxury of not. Under the rules, being able to issue a nomination, and I think that this is a very difficult job for the rest of the board. But at this point, we will move into nominations, we'll receive nominations from the directors. And with the nomination, then I will ask for a second, all of those of you that are officially nominated are invited to stay. You can remain at the table where you are, if you are not nominated, we invite you to stick around if you'd like to. We will take a, a brief recess after the voting process is over and I'd certainly like to personally thank each one of you individually. I'm sure other directors might like to do that as well. But if you're not nominated officially, you're certainly free to leave as well. So with all of those preliminary items stated, I will open up. The voting to nominations of any of the six potential candidates.
Question, Mr. Nell?
Yes.
One board member is allowed to nominate more than one person or second more than one?
Certainly.
Yes.
And please take a few minutes to look over your, your data that you've compiled. And this is the awkward pause moment. Invite anyone to make a nomination, speak up.
I'll nominate Chantel Lozer.
Great, thank you. Is there a second? And if all we have is nominations and not seconds, I will dispense with the seconds.
I'll second.
Great, thank you. Ms. Lozer is nominated. Any others?
I would nominate Troy Williams.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Williams?
Like nominate Ariana Day.
Is there a second? Okay, hearing none, is there another nomination? And of course, that nomination has been made, still open to a second.
Like nominate Shen Kreiser?
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Kreiser, you are nominated?
I'd like to nominate Joe Murphy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Murphy, that means we have four candidates currently that have been nominated and seconded. We have one Ms. Day that has been nominated, but no second, so at this point, we do have four candidates, are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. We will proceed with a vote on the four candidates. Shen Kreiser, Chantel Lozer, Joseph Murphy and Troy Williams. Again, thank you for those that are here, those that weren't nominated, we appreciate your time, your effort. I do encourage you again that the, the, the primary is this May. There are a number of seats that are going to be open and I do encourage each of you. To put your name forward and run. So with that said, Ms. Kreiser, Ms. Lozer, Mr. Murphy and Mr. Williams are invited to stay at the table. The others, you are excused, thank you so much. Okay, we will proceed on a vote, the way that we will conduct this vote is via roll call, so the secretary will call each director's name. At this point, you can vote for one nominated candidate, we will tally up the votes. If there is one candidate that has five, that candidate will immediately be sworn in and serve for the remainder of this meeting and through. And until December, as the replacement board member. Mrs. Martin?
Bucks. Mr. Joe Murphy. England.
Troy Williams.
Fowler.
Joe Murphy.
Murray. Joe Murphy. Klein.
Chantel Lozer.
Marlo.
Troy Williams.
Erdman.
Chantel Lozer.
Nom.
This is very difficult. Mr. Williams?
Two Lozer. Three Williams, three Murphy.
Thank you, so that means that the remaining two candidates are Mr. Murphy and Mr. Williams. Ms. Lozer and Ms. Kreiser, you are also excused, thank you again so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will proceed to round two of voting.
England.
Troy Williams.
Fowler.
Joe Murphy.
Murray. Joe Murphy.
Joe Murphy.
Klein.
Troy Williams.
Marlo.
Troy Williams.
Erdman.
Troy Williams.
Nom.
Troy Williams.
Bucks.
Joe Murphy.
Five for Williams, three for Murphy.
Great, thank you. Mr. Williams, you are officially voted in as the replacement director for the Northern Lebanon School District. We will now swear you in. Mrs. Martin will do that.
Will you stand, please, and raise your right hand? Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, you may take a seat at the board table. And before we proceed with the formal business agenda tonight, we will take a five to 10 minute break. Please feel free to use the restroom. Please feel free, directors, to thank those candidates that showed up tonight. We will reconvene in no later than 10 minutes. Okay, I believe we are back, so we will reconvene the meeting for our formal business. Once again, I just want to thank everybody for that process, and it's it's difficult, tough decisions. I think I speak on my own behalf that I would have happily served alongside with any of the candidates, and that was a good and difficult decision. So I appreciate it to everyone that was participating. We'll move to the items for board action. It should be noted that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. By notice of the president, the following action requires a voiced vote. All votes in favor shall be stated with an aye or yes. All votes opposed shall be stated with a nay or no. All members abstaining shall state, I abstain when prompted. The votes will be recorded in the minutes as a unanimous roll call vote unless there are any votes in opposition or abstention. If necessary, the president may subsequently call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes. We will move to the consent agenda. Dr. Messinger?
I just ask that you approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
To approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting item nine, the consent agenda, please indicate with the yes or aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? None, my vote is also yes. That is unanimous. The motion carries. We'll move to item 10.
Yeah, 10.1 would be our updated winter coaches. That had that includes some assistance we were looking for, filling out some junior high positions specifically. So that we are up to date and good to go. And 10.2, we have an updated substitute list. We have a resignation. I do want to say, because it came up tonight, that one of the things I was just talking about our CBA and where we're going to be meeting shortly before Thanksgiving here, I'm hoping. And you know, we do have with some of the new contracts that have come out on our starting salary side, we do have some some work to do to be competitive with others. I was actually, when I met with the Department of Ed in DC, the gentleman that I was meeting with, who I believe is a second in command, said he thinks we ought to start teachers at $100,000 and they Leanne's gonna have a heart attack. Sorry, Leanne. I'm not suggesting that, but I do think our teachers, all teachers, work extremely hard and it's a difficult job. But anyway, we do have some some salary things to take care of. But so substitute list, one resignation, two custodians for employment, and then a job description that I talked to you about. But I also want to, I want to just point out that we are not hiring any additional personnel. And just want to be clear about that, but we are starting to prepare some some changes in terms of structure with the new elementary when that is when that opens up to run more efficiently. Obviously, going from four buildings to one creates some different opportunities for us and moving some some things around in terms in terms of efficiency. But that will not be a new, we will not be adding a new person. Just want to make that clear.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding items 10.1 and 10.2? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve items 10.1 and 10.2?
Motion to approve 10.1 and 10.2.
You, Director Williams, do you have a second?
A second.
Congratulations. It's your first official action as a board member. All in favor of approving items 10.1 and 10.2?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, my vote is also yes. It's unanimous. The motion carries. There is no information on tonight's agenda. Item 12 is the reports of the representatives. Change Order Committee, Director Bucks, anything to report?
There is nothing to report because the past two change order committee meetings were not needed. But I am told that in two weeks, we will need the meeting. There will be a change.
There's a few coming.
Great. Electrical panels?
There's a few of those coming too.
CTC, Director Klein?
Yeah, I got a couple of things for you. Our solicitor, Dave Walker, recently moved to another firm and he joined Stock and Leader. So there's going to be a minor minor switch there. He has a little more resources there, the Stock and Leader. We are having some issues with the roof. It's going to cost us some money. We are also moving forward with a large sewer project. The CTC began their recruitment process for next year, and they're in the process of visiting all the county schools. A representative from NASA, the NASA project I talked about a couple of months ago, will be visiting our CTC in December. I hope I hope to be able to attend that meeting. And lastly, our chef Paffley has been asked to serve as a national chairman of the American Culinary Federation's apprenticeship program. Chef Paffley is pretty highly regarded in the in the CTC schools, and we're glad that he's going to be able to serve in that capacity.
Great.
Thank you.
I don't know if you have, if you know the answer to this question, but with the sewer and roof projects, are we able to use the kids as as any part of that? As training?
So I know they do get hands on with some issues.
Yeah.
Around the CTC. Around the CTC, but I'm not so sure they're going to get involved in this.
Just curious. Thought it sounded like a good opportunity. IU 13, Director Murray?
Yeah, so the last meeting that we had was at the newly purchased Mannheim building, which I greatly appreciated because it was a little closer for me to drive. So there's a really nice building that the IU has purchased in the Mannheim area that in that they're utilizing for the some of our most vulnerable students in the Lebanon Lancaster area. So really nice building and Matt Stem continues to do a really good, really great job of leading the IU 13. He had big shoes to fill, but so far he's doing fantastic. So.
Great. Thank you. Lia legislative liaison, Director England, anything to report?
Sure, there are supply chain issues in many areas of our world currently, but it's been alluded to tonight. The teacher shortage is fairly significant. The Meadville Tribune's recent report on teachers in Pennsylvania shows that more teachers are currently being hired under emergency permits than receive formal certifications. In fact, new teacher certifications fell 64% in the past decade, sliding from around 21,000 issued in 2010 to 2011 to 8,000 issued in 202021, according to data from the PDE. That shortage extends well beyond Pennsylvania. Public education in the US employs around 360,000 fewer workers than prior to the pandemic. If the current trajectory is maintained in backfilling this deficit, some predict that pre-pandemic levels will not be reached until August of 2032. Financial reasons no doubt play into high schoolers choosing a career path in college, and the current wage of public school educators tends to not be a strong point for recruiting future teachers. However, the $100,000 thing might change all that. So here are a few suggested solutions for improving this scenario. Surveying teachers about the challenges they face and responding appropriately with training opportunities and administrative support. Reducing the amount of top down educational mandates that choke the creativity and freedom of the teaching profession. Initiating education scholarships, elevating the teaching profession through a public advertising campaign, and again, raising wages. One final thought, a national NEA survey conducted in early 2022 revealed that around 55% of educators are considering leaving teaching earlier than originally planned. Burnout from labor shortages is given as a reason for this likely exodus. So there's much work to be done involving legislation to improve this shortage and provide a clear path to a more robust education force in the coming years. Burnout from labor shortages is given as a reason for this likely exodus. So there's much work to be done involving legislation to improve this shortage and provide a clear path to a more robust education force in the coming years.
Great, thank you. Where was that data from? The initial data? Great, thank you. Good report, if a little depressing. PSBA Liaison, Director Bucks?
No report for PSBA this month.
Okay, great, thank you. Is there any new business for this evening? Hearing none. Before we adjourn, I would just direct you to the dates to remember. As Dr. Messinger indicated at the outset of the meeting, next month, we do have our reorganization meeting prior to our committee meeting. That will be held, as I said, prior to the committee meeting. We need to, between now and then, identify somebody that is willing to serve in an interim capacity as president for that reorganization meeting. So if you are interested in serving in that role and don't anticipate an interest in serving as an officer for next year, please let Mrs. Martin and me know so that we can slot you into that position for the reorg. Between now and that reorganization meeting, please also let Mrs. Martin know if you have any nominations for president or vice president for the coming year, you can self-nominate as well. If if we need to, if the current treasurer perchance might be elected to one of those positions, then we may need to fill the treasurer position as well. But give it some thought between now and the committee meeting, and please, please inform the secretary and the board president if you have any nominations for officer positions going forward. And then the last thing regarding December is we do not currently have a scheduled regular meeting on the 13th, but we can schedule it if we need to based upon what derives between now and then and the committee meeting. Any questions at all regarding any of those items? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard, Mr. Williams. Looking forward to meeting with you.
That disembodied voice was the solicitor.
Yeah. Have a good night, everybody.